Welcome to the Common Council Meeting for Tuesday, April 27. Will you please stand? I'll call the meeting to order. Will you please stand for their Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under our, indivisible, the liberty and justice of all. First item on the agenda is a public hearing. This is a public hearing for special assessments, including Street Construction Project 312241, Water Main and Service Lateral Project 312242, Storm Sewer Project 316777, and Sanitary Sewer Service Lateral Project 352144 for the following streets: Cleveland Street, Central Avenue to Daigie Street, Chestnut Avenue, Cleveland Street to Blodgett Street, Oak Avenue, Cleveland Street to Blodgett Street, Pine Avenue, Cleveland Street to Blodgett Street, and Blodgett Street, Chestnut Avenue to Central Avenue. Is there anyone here that wishes to comment on this matter? Anyone who wishes to comment on the public hearing? Third and final call for a public hearing. Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing and move on to Item D, Public Comment Period. At this time, the council president will recognize members of the public who have indicated the desire to address the council. Upon recognition by the council president, persons may address the council first stating their name and address. The council may act on emergency matters introduced by members of the public. Anyone who wishes to speak? Mr. Hiller, floor is yours.
Hello, Jim Hiller, 1011 East Grant Street. Tonight you will be considering and possibly voting on the Fire and Police Commission appointments, mask requirements, and how to fill the empty mayor's position. Here's my thoughts. As far as the mayor's position, we need to hold a special election. This election should be conducted by the city. A figure of $15,000 was mentioned previously as the cost of this election. Why do we need to pay to connect county services? They should have no influence in this election. The election could be conducted on paper ballots, counted and tabulated by local citizens. The other options mentioned, that of a city manager is not a good idea because the citizens and aldermen lose control after the city manager is fired. Likewise, the "let's flip a coin" or "do rock, paper, scissors" while we wait till next April won't work either. We need to have someone break the tie votes. We need someone to lead our city. And to have the alderman pick the mayor is the worst ideal yet as it would show that there was collusion to get rid of our past mayor and deepen the disdain between the public and the common council. Remember, the mayor is supposed to be elected by the citizens. My recommendation, hold a local special election where the citizens decide who the next mayor is. The mask issue is quite simple. Eliminate it. The citizens and employees of Marshfield are intelligent people who make life-altering decisions daily. We don't need our elected representatives making those decisions for us. We have documents called the Constitution and the Bill of Rights. There is nothing that supersedes these documents. If this pandemic is so deadly, then why has the federal government refused to impose a federal mandate? Why has the Wisconsin Supreme Court ruled that the governor acted illegally by imposing restrictions on Wisconsin citizens? And finally, if we can eliminate the city's requirements in two weeks, as will be proposed, I believe, later tonight, why can't we do it tonight? Why do we have to wait two weeks? Someone's fear about an illness that has a 99-plus percent survival rate and now has vaccines and other medications to fight it does not void our constitutional rights. My recommendation, eliminate all mask requirements tonight and draft an ordinance to make sure there will be no requirement to mandate vaccines in the future. And now, my last concern. Not all appointments are good for the community. Such is the case with our Police and Fire Commission. We need to slow down and make sure the appointments will better the commission, our emergency services, and our city. I believe that the issue is too important to rush someone in as a commissioner. What would it hurt to hold off for another week, two weeks, or a month? There has been a lot of citizen concern over this commission. There is still a criminal and law enforcement investigation occurring in reference to possible state law violations. There are questions about potential city policy and possible municipal ordinance violations. The citizens want a new commission. We want a transparent commission. We want a commission that welcomes and promotes community involvement instead of hindering it. We want a commission with no personal agendas and commissioners with desire to serve in the best interest of the city. So I'm asking one of you to step forward and make a motion to temporarily recess these appointments. My recommendation, recess the Police and Fire Commission appointments, put out a citywide request for qualified individuals, and appoint after careful consideration. We have a chance tonight to start our city's healing. Which way will we go? Will we continue the path requiring constant citizen observation, distrust and monitoring? Or will we return to a time where the citizens trusted and believed that their elected representatives are acting in the community's best interest? I don't get to make that choice. You do. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens who wish to comment? Marissa.
My name is Marissa Steinbach. I reside at 1311 East 20th Street. A couple of months ago, I had the opportunity to listen to female Marshfield police officers as they shared their experience regarding the work environment. In their words, with their voice, they told of the harassment, fear, discrimination, and retaliation they experienced on a regular basis by those who were chosen to provide oversight to their department. It moved me to tears, and it caused me many sleepless nights. Quite simply, for a number of years, this city has failed to provide a safe working environment. This isn't happening to unfamiliar faces in another city or state. This is happening in our backyard, our community. These are our neighbors, our friends, and our family. They have tried to go through the proper channels, only to be ignored, or worse, blamed. They have tried. We are working to uncover incidents that have been buried and covered up, and what we have found so far has been alarming. We teach our children that if they see something, say something. Bring it to light. Be an advocate for those who aren't in a position to speak up, even if it means unfair criticism and retaliation. I know in my heart that what I'm doing is right for the women in our community. One day, when it's safe for them, I hope that you'll be able to hear their stories in their voices. Until that day comes, I will continue to speak up for the women who vowed to protect and serve this community and be an advocate for those in need.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Any other comments? Thank you. Moving on to Item Number E, approval of the minutes of the April 13, 2021 Regular Meeting and the April 20, 2021 Organizational Meeting. Have a motion by Mr. Handler and a second by Mr. Fire. Any comments? All those in favor, please vote on the... I don't have a... I don't have a thing. Technical difficulties. You didn't vote? That never came up to me in the vote. My vote would be aye. And that motion carries. Item F, Staff Updates. Report on the Van De Heye Waters Project. Justin Casper, Parks and Recreation Director. Justin.
Good evening. At your place, you'll have some photos of the recent construction of the pool. Overall, the project's going really well. The weather's been fantastic. Everything has been going really smoothly. Let's hope that continues into the summer. The pool company itself is completing piping and backfilling the soil banks around the pool. A final conduit is going on on a deep end of the pool. They're installing the pool light junction boxes in the building and outside the fencing. In the family recreation pool, the zero-depth entry, the plumbing is complete, and they're setting up the pumps in the mechanical rooms. You'll probably see a couple of pictures of those pumps kind of going in today. The slides, which will be above ground, will start to go up this week and should be completed by next week. The indoor plumbing fixtures are complete and final plumbing inside is all done. They're finalizing electrical trim, lights, and switches. The site concrete is being formed, so that's like a lot of the flat work sidewalks, things of that nature, curbs, gutters. That's all being formed up this week. The foundation for the pavilion and the monument sign and the shade structures is complete. The shade structure should go up probably next week. It's en route right now. The project is still on schedule and on budget. We hope to have an opening sometime in early July. I will offer a tour to the council this Thursday at noon. We'll park. I'll send you an email. I'll give you a map of where to park. It's not that easy to explain at this time. There's a lot of equipment with backhoes and earth movers and dozers. It wouldn't be easy for you guys to get there, so I'll send an email where we'll meet. So that'll be this Thursday at noon at the site.
Okay, anybody have any questions for Justin? Ain't none. We'll move on to the council president's comments. I'll forego making any speeches today, but I do want to remind people that Saturday is Arbor Day. And if you missed out on doing anything for Earth Day last week, well, then plant a tree on Saturday. Are there any council comments? Moving along. Any reports from commissions, boards, or committees? Seeing none. Item Number J, the Consent Agenda. Entertain a motion to approve. Motion by Mr. Fisher, second by Mr. Butke. Are there any comments? No comments. Please vote. My vote is also an aye. There were no items removed from the consent agenda. The next item is L, Presentation on the Value of the Utility presented by Nick Cum from Marshfield Utilities. Nick?
Good evening. Thank you. Annually, the Marshfield Utility Commissioners and I provide a presentation or a video, as we did this last fall, on the value of the utility that focuses on our stakeholders, which are our customers, the city of Marshfield, and the community as whole. Tonight, the video will focus on the community, so without further delay, here's the video.
Hi, I'm Nicholas Cum, the General Manager with Marshfield Utilities. Marshfield Utilities is your local public utility, providing electric and water service to nearly 14,000 customers in the city of Marshfield and surrounding townships. The following video will highlight the value that Marshfield Utilities provides to the community. Throughout the video, you'll hear from the commissioners of Marshfield Utilities. The commissioners are an appointed body of citizens that oversee the operations and effectiveness of the utility.
One of the ways Marshfield Utilities provides value to our community is through environmental guardianship. We try to be great stewards of our environment within our community and for all the customers that we serve. One of the ways that we provide environmental guardianship is through our Wellhead Protection Program. This way, we protect the water, which is a very limited resource that we have for our community. Our groundwater guardian efforts in conjunction with the police department have prevented over 15,000 pounds of pharmaceuticals from entering into our landfills and into our water system. Our Monarch Butterfly Protection Efforts, in conjunction with the City of Marshfield Wastewater Department and the Marshfield Monarch Group. A strategic initiative on paperless movement has led to many forms or processes either eliminated or converted to paperless, and many more of those are in the works. Marshfield Utilities understands the need to be good stewards of our environment in whatever ways that we can. We want to make sure that we protect the valuable resources, and in many cases, somewhat limited resources, that we have in order to make Marshfield a cleaner and safer place in which to live. One of the things that I value most about Marshfield Utilities is that we are a publicly owned company. This allows us to reinvest directly into the community and the customers that we serve. That's unlike companies that are for-profit and have to invest their profits with their shareholders.
Here at Marshfield Utilities, we have a very stable workforce. We employ about 46 employees, and the average tenure at the utility is over 12 years. We use a variety of employees ranging from unskilled labor to apprenticeship programs, to technical college, to full college grads and engineering-type people. One of the advantages of Marshfield Utilities being a local operation, our employees' wages recirculate in the local economy. It's estimated by the Chamber of Commerce that those wages circulate five to six times through the local economy. As a community organization, Marshfield Utilities tries to buy as many services locally as possible. In 2020, we spent about $1.8 million in the local economy, purchasing services from printing to office supplies. With the construction of the new building for Marshfield Utilities beginning in 2021, a couple of the contracts were awarded to local vendors for portions of the construction. That will add $2 million in 2021 to our already local purchases.
Marshfield Utilities remains very active in the community through various means. Our staff professionally and personally volunteer in different areas to help support the community. Our employees are involved in many personal and professional volunteer efforts. In 2019, our employees volunteered over 260 hours of volunteer time to Marshfield Utilities-sponsored events. In 2020, those numbers were reduced, unfortunately, due to the pandemic. However, we were still able to support the hygiene drive, the holiday lighting contest, and helping out our local schools through virtual means. Marshfield Utilities employs many local leaders that serve on various local, state, and national boards and committees. We also participate in community events like Business After Five and Dairy Fest. Our employees also participate in the annual United Way fundraising campaign.
My name is John Schneider, and this is my third year on the Marshfield Utilities Commission. And since my time here, I've been noticing how passionate we are as far as the education of our youth and how we interact with our kids. And through that, we have various programs that we do. Some of those are the Heavy Metal Tour, where we get various kids, eighth graders, come, and it's an actual hands-on tour of our facilities and the trucks and all the equipment. Another program is where we participate with various businesses within the community, and they're called Reality Stores. And there, we teach the eighth graders various projects about real life, how to budget for their life, and what a water bill's going to be like, what an electric bill is going to be like, and actually teach them to help budget for their life and what to expect. Another program, which is very popular, is the Girl Scouts Patch Program. There, we educate the kids onto the groundwater and how to preserve and protect and not pollute the groundwater. And again, that's very popular. The girls can earn a patch reward for their participation in that. Also, Marshfield Utilities goes to various schools and gives classroom presentations. Linemen go show what it is to be alignment. Our human HR people go teach them various things from how to make resumes, what to look for in jobs, the jobs that are out there within our facility or other municipal utilities. And we do that from all the way from elementary to the college kids, and it's very popular, too. It gives them a little outlook as to what Marshfield Utilities has for jobs and where they can fit maybe their future into Marshfield Utilities.
Marshfield Utilities takes pride in giving back to the community, and one of the ways it does that is finding ways to give donations throughout the community and support local community projects. One way we do that is by giving back through raffle prizes and tickets and pens and pencils to different organizations for their projects in the community. Another way Marshfield Utilities gives back to the community is by financial support towards the local tech colleges and to the Marshall Historical Society and to other organizations throughout the community. Some of the more recent, larger sponsorships that Marshfield Utilities has supported is the YMCA and the Marshfield Sports Complex, as well as the Electric Display at Wildwood Zoo and the Water Table. The staff at Marshfield Utilities also put a fundraising campaign together to support the education materials at the Wildwood Zoo Welcome Center. The education materials will help to enhance the learning at the Water and Electric Display at Wildwood Zoo. As a small business owner in Marshfield, I appreciate the rates that Marshfield Utilities offers compared to other communities in this area. The competitive rates help to maintain the profitability of our business and to be able to continue to grow our business and continue to contribute to our community.
Thank you for taking the time to watch the video. I hope you found the information interesting and educational in learning about how Marshfield Utilities supports the local community.
So I hope you enjoyed the video. Obviously, it showed you a different aspect of Marshfield Utilities that you don't see on a day-to-day basis. I apologize. I didn't bring any of the pie that I ended up getting in my face. In addition, each year, I provide a recap on the annual pilot payment and dividend. This year, the electric pilot payment is $1.26 million. The water pilot is just shy of $700,000. And the dividend payment to support economic development is $233,000, for a total of just under $2.2 million. I'd like to thank the Common Council for your support through the last year, and I welcome any questions if you have any.
Thanks, Nick. Does anyone have any questions for Nick? Ain't none. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item M, Consideration and Possible Action on Resolution Number 21-2021-31, Approving an Amendment to the Project Plan and Boundaries of Tax Incremental District Number 7, City of Marshfield, Wisconsin, introduced by Josh Miller, Development Service Director. Josh?
Thank you, Council President. With us, we have Dave Ferris from Ellers. I'm just going to touch on a few things and then go into a little more detail on some of these other things, but I'll take the socks in. Alderman Wagner doesn't like it when I wear a mask. So TID 7, we're looking at amending. TID 7 is our Yellowstone Business Park Industrial Park. It's our heavy industrial area. What we're looking to do is remove four parcels from this. This is our fourth amendment, and the state allows you to amend the TIF district four times. We're removing four parcels, and the reason for that is there's essentially vacant parcels or underutilized parcels, and removing them will allow us to put them in a future district and allow us to better utilize them down the road. So the parcel you have to the southeast corner, that's a 47-acre piece with about 16 acres of developable land. The rest is a stormwater pond, regional stormwater pond, and some wetlands. Looking to remove this parcel to add it to the future TID 12. The remaining parcels on the west side of the district would really be strategically placed for a future district down the road. So those are underutilized. The expenditure period is already over for TID 7, so there's really no purpose in keeping them in TID 7. And they essentially have very little to no value as far as assessed value. They have a lot of value for future projects. So removing those allows us to add them to another district. The projected payoff, this really has no impact on the closure for TID 7. We still project it to pay off in 2028. Even under a worst-case scenario, we still anticipate it paying off early. So this was once a distressed TIF district. The last amendment was to declare it distressed, but since then, it's grown leaps and bounds. We've had a number of great projects come on. ECA, Quality Tank Solutions, Silver Coat, Midwest Auto Movers. So a lot of those have come on since we've declared it distressed, so now it's profitable and making its debt service payment. So with that, I guess I'll turn it over to Dave if he's got anything else to add on TID 7.
Sure. Thanks, Josh. As you know, we met quite a few months ago to consider this at the Joint Review Board and the Planning Commission. And just so you're aware, at the Joint Review Board, we talked to the committee about their duties and what the timeline would be, reintroduced to project plan, and there really weren't any questions regarding the subtraction from the JRB members. At the Planning Commission, we once again introduced it. We had one question from the public during the public hearing from a resident that was a little confused about what the end of the expenditure period versus the end of the district was. Once that was explained, they were comfortable with the answer we gave them. Once that was explained, they were comfortable with the answer we gave them, and the committee itself did not have any questions whatsoever on this one, and approved the resolution unanimously and then also recommended that the city council approve the resolution amending the district. Josh kind of alluded to a couple of things that I was going to say, but like you said, the value on the parcels that are being subtracted are almost nothing, and so it really had no impact on what year we thought the district would potentially close, 2028 either way with or without that subtraction. So, if the district is going on with about a $780,000 increment, and that's going very strong, and, you know, like Josh said, if things, something else clicks that potentially it would pay off just a little bit earlier. As far as timing, this will apply to both of the districts, and I'll just say it at this point. You know, we met with the Planning Commission, the Joint Review Board on the nineteenth of January. You're approving this tonight. The only reason that there's been a delay in bringing it to you is just because some of the zoning with TID twelve that you're considering tonight. And then, if you consider this and approve it tonight, the Joint Review Board will have to meet yet, and if the Joint Review Board approves this, assuming that the city council approves, that we have about sixty days that we will have to get the joint review or get the paperwork into the Department of Revenue. So, Josh, I think that's all I really had to say, unless you think there's something else that you wanted to add on this district.
No, just because of the order of operations, we asked that the council consider approving Resolution 2021-31, approving the project plan amendment and boundary amendment for TID seven.
Do we have a motion to that effect? Motion by Mr. Handler, second by Mr. Fire. Are any comments, questions for either Mr. Ferris or Josh? Seeing none, please vote. My vote will be in favor. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number N, consideration and possible action on Resolution Number 2021-32, creating tax incremental District Number Twelve, approving its project plan and establishing its boundaries, introduced by Josh Miller, Development Service Director.
Thank you. This is obviously the next critical component for us on the TIF district front. As David mentioned, we did have to take a pause to get some zoning straightened out of the egg research farm. That land was previously zoned RH35. In order to approve a project plan or approve a TIF district for an industrial use or for an industrial TIF, it has to be at least fifty percent zoned and usable for industrial purposes. So, we had to get that cleaned up. The base value of the property, well, let me just go over the actual map here. So, what we're looking at is about 125 acres of land from the egg research farm. So, that's basically farmland and a little bit of wetlands and a pond on the northeast corner. We are including the egg research facility itself, and then the remaining parcel south of Yellowstone Drive, the forty-seven acres that we just had removed from TID seven. All told, it's about 180 acres. About 140 of it is usable industrial land, and that'll give us a great opportunity for future industrial growth. As I've talked before, and I know that the chamber has been very supportive of trying to get more industrial land, TID seven, as we said, has kind of just bloomed over the last few years, and quickly, we've completed our available heavy industrial land. So, this is important in being able to attract development to the area, and having a large track is important because we've actually missed out on some opportunities for site selectors because we haven't had the large tracks of residential land. So, this would put us in the game, plus we have rail nearby, so there's really great opportunities for growth here. And the timing couldn't be better. We do have an option to purchase on that property. It ends in 2022, January 2022, so it's critical that we get this in place before we can exercise that option, so that's a TIF-eligible expense, and we want to take advantage and be able to acquire that property. So, this property was also, since our last meetings on the TIF, was added to the sewer service area planning boundary, so that was important so we can provide services to this area, and as I said, rezoning it. The proposed project costs include, it's about $15 million is what we project could be spent, and that's usually what Ron and I like to refer to as a not-to-exceed number, and that includes kind of the kitchen sink. But this approval of this plan does not authorize staff to make expenditures for the TIF. We would still have to budget for it. If it's not budgeted, it would still have to be a budget resolution. So, the council will still have authority to approve expenditures for the TIF all along. And the whole purpose of that is we want to make sure that the projects pay for themselves. So, there's a return on investment for any project we put in, whether that's infrastructure, developer incentives, site clearing, anything, rail expansion. We want to make sure that there's a return on investment. And as we've talked lately about how we want to do incentives, we want to structure it more as a pay-as-you-go if we can, you know, and that's really to the benefit of the city. It puts less risk at the city, and if the developer agrees and we can make that agreement, it's really a win-win. They're able to get an incentive, and we're able to pay that off as the taxes come in. So, some of the project costs include property acquisition, environmental remediation, sanitary and water improvements, stormwater improvements, streets, potential rail line, and developer incentives. So, we're not going to, we don't have a project in mind yet necessarily that we're going to do all of these things or any of them. It's basically as development occurs. We project, based on, you know, recent projection or recent increment from TID seven, in the last, I think in the last five years, we've increased that value $25 million. To be conservative, we know that's a pretty rapid pace. We estimate $5 million every two years of growth, so that's half of what we've done in the last five years. That may also be aggressive, but we're trying to, we have to try to ballpark the number somehow. So, we project, even if it's built out, at least mostly built out, about $45 million of new value, which would essentially cover most of the costs. And obviously, we put in additional costs, project costs, just in case they come up. So, we want to be able to have some flexibility in there, but again, you're not committed to those specific projects. So, this is just, the project plan is really just, it's not a crystal ball. It's a good estimate of what we think could happen, and we don't want to put the infrastructure in at this time because we don't know what's going to be coming around down the road. If a project comes and they need 100 acres, we want to be able to have 100 acres for them. We don't want to put a road in the middle of the industrial park and then we split up a parcel and we don't have the available land for it. So, we kind of estimated on some of the lots, showed some of the project costs on, you know, what the street would be, where the rail would go. We have a potential south rail line along south of Yellowstone if that ends up working out. And then, the beauty of the TIF law is you can make expenditures within a half-mile of the boundary. So, the additional road to get to the Yellowstone, the new business park on Twenty Second Street would be TIF-eligible to extend that. So, really, it's, and another project cost that's part of this is promotion. So, we'll certainly work with the chamber and others to try to promote this to the region and to the state that we are in the game again with industrial land for the city of Marshfield. So, I'll turn it back over to Dave if you have anything else to go over.
Sure. That same night that we talked about TID seven with the Joint Review Board, we also talked to them about TID twelve, and really, the members had some pretty good questions about when we would be installing improvements. And as Josh talked about, the pace of development will really dictate when we do our work because we really want to make sure that we don't spend a lot of money and then sit there and have no value coming in from it. So, we made it pretty clear to them that there would need to be some development that would trigger some of those improvements going in. As far as the Plan Commission goes, they also had no questions on the project plan at that level. Approved their resolution unanimously and approved the resolution to send the creation resolution to the council to approve. Josh went through quite a bit with the maps and the cost. Other things that, you know, we can talk about is the $45 million that Josh just had to ask, you know, they estimated what would take to put in all the improvements, because everything went in. It takes about the $45 million to put in the whole amount, but as we said, you know, that would be if you did everything. That means everything would have to happen, and this crystal ball probably isn't that strong. So, you're hopefully going to have development that kicks us dead, and you're going to have the increment that pays off what actually does get put in. As far as the cash flow goes, if everything that's in this plan, like if we have that great crystal ball, we project that if everything happens that's in here that you would build those within, I think about five years early, if I recall correctly. 2038, I think, is what we had on here. So, like I said, we had consideration by those two committees in, or two meetings in January, which got delayed a little bit because of what Josh said about the industrial zoning. Now that that's pretty much in place, your consideration tonight would be the trigger that sends it to the Joint Review Board to consider, and then after that, the paperwork would be submitted to the Department of Revenue.
So, with that, staff is recommending approval of our Resolution 2021-32 to approve the creation of a TID twelve and the project plan.
Mr. Buckey, is that your motion? Is there a second? A second by Mr. Rosen, did you, any comments or questions for Josh or Mr. Ferris? Mr. Wagner?
Thank you, Mr. President. Josh, I spent a lot of time going over these things, especially the charts, and like many of my colleagues, I think we're a little bit skittish about borrowing these days, about what we borrow and how much we borrow. Couple of questions, and maybe Dave can help with this. It would be, in your presentation, Dave, it'd be on page twenty-seven. The, you show tax increments on the left-hand side of that, and you show them increasing by, I figured it out, I went back and checked it, and you're doing it by about 10% a year. Is that just your, how did you get those tax increments? How did you come, because right now, that's set at a reset, it's sort of more of a zero value as far as we're concerned, because what we're looking for is the increment. But how do you get these increments? Where does the $114,000 in the first year come from?
So, if you look at page twenty-four, that's where the increment is calculated, in that same document you're looking at. So, this assumes that, what's that?
Yeah, I've got that, too. Go ahead.
Okay, so that's what projects the increment. So, obviously, if we don't get value in the ground in 2021, that $5 million that the interim tax rate that's used to calculate TIF increment would be the $114,000. Depending on when you actually get a project, there may be some delay as far as that value goes, but this spreadsheet here is what calculates that. There's a little bit of inflation calculated on that, and obviously, the later we get started, the less increment we're going to have, but probably the later we get started, the later the improvement will go in, too. So, I think.
Yeah, that's, yeah, I understand that. The thing I'm concerned about is how much we're going to spend initially, and, well, I think Josh answered the question well, that you're not going, we're not going to be borrowing more money, say, like the 2025 showing that you're borrowing for there, or you'll end up with another $2 million or something to do projects with. But those won't, those won't happen unless there's something happening there, unless there's something.
Correct.
But in the meantime.
Correct.
Whatever debt we incur is going to go directly on the tax bill. Is that right?
No, that's not correct.
Okay, explain that to me.
What's that?
Any expense we incur, we're going to, am I incorrect, we're going to be borrowing $300,000, is that correct?
Yeah, so the initial obligation that we would have is what we've spent on the TIF to create it, the environmental, the wetland delineation that we've done so far, and then whatever the purchase price is for the land. So, those are the, I mean, if we go forward with it. So, those are the, probably, it'll be less than $300,000, but in that ballpark. So, that would be what we are essentially on the hook for without any project going forward.
Yeah, and so, how are you paying that for, that, well, you aren't going to be paying any principal and interest on that until, what, the third year? Is that what it is?
The second year. So, we did it only to begin with because, because to have, so it's a two-year process by the time the construction occurs and when that value actually generates taxes. So, I mean, the increment calculation.
Thank you.
So, what will happen in the first year, which is pretty normal in TIF districts, is that there'll be, there'll be some, you know, wait and see until that development occurs, but the actual real taxpayer will not see a bill for the, the TIF district will make it up over time. Typically, their deficit in the beginning years, as it is, as it's shown in the cumulative column. So, what we're hoping is that as we get the development in the door, that that cumulative will go away like it shows on page twenty-eight, and the district will continue to be positive in the future.
Yeah, I've got that, page twenty-eight here, too. Yeah, you're showing it, yeah, you're showing it, the negative in 2021 and 2022 then, right? Okay, but that's not, that's like $19,000 in deficit in the first year and $34,000 in the second, is that correct? On page twenty-eight, yeah. Okay, so that.
Yeah, and that assumes we get a development in the door right away. So, if that development is delayed, it could be that that cumulative is a little bit bigger in the beginning, but, you know, as we get that development, it'll hopefully bring it back and will be positive and look like, at least what the black numbers start looking like a little later on.
Yeah, that's what I'm getting at, and that's why, you know, I'm a little gun-shy over this thing to begin with. I understand the need for the additional land. I understand that we've been approached and have not had land available, but I just, knowing what our debt service looks like now and knowing that we are now adopting a policy of paying 100% of our debt service every year, anything we add to it sends just a little bit of a chill up my spine.
Sure, and if I can add a few things to what Dave and Josh are saying, a couple things, keep in mind, our debt service that's funded by tax levies is completely separate from this. So, this has no effect on our tax levy, the amount citizens pay. So, it's paid for by increment that comes out of it. Second, the initial costs, you know, if they're nominal, we could either go out and take a state trust fund loan, we could formally borrow on behalf of the TID, it becomes a TID debt, or the other option, if the number seems kind of small, we also have, so could we just, could run a deficit in the TID, which sounds.
Horrible.
No?
I don't like that word, and I know you don't.
So, say we, say we've got some nominal startup cost, say it's $50,000, TID twelve has a $50,000 deficit. We now have a mechanism where they pay interest back to the general fund at the rate of 3%. So, they could run a deficit. The general fund's made hold for basically advancing those funds. Actually, 3% is really, really good right now. And then, when the dollar bond gets up to something that we'd want to go out and take a formal debt, then we would go out and take the state trust fund loan and then finance.
Okay, so they would still have to borrow from the general fund to cover the deficit, and we, and then the TID would pay it back?
Correct, yep.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to express my trepidation. Thank you very much.
Are there any further questions or comments? Seeing none, please vote. My vote is yes. And that motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number O, request to approve Resolution Number 2021-26, approving final special assessments for street construction project 312241, water maintenance service lateral project 312242, storm sewer project 316777, and sanitary sewer service lateral project 352144 for the following streets: Cleveland Street, Central Avenue to Daigie Street, Chestnut Avenue, Cleveland Street to Blodgett Street, Oak Avenue, Cleveland Street to Blodgett Street, Pine Avenue, Cleveland Street to Blodgett Street, Blodgett Street, Chestnut Avenue to Central Avenue, presented by Tom Turchi, City Engineer. Tom?
Nick, I'd like to thank you for reading that all for me, so that I don't have to go through it again. Basically, this is a revised final resolution for the Cleveland Street project that was completed last year. There was one property that was not within the assessment district that had a sanitary sewer lateral that was replaced because it crossed a different property to get, and we came upon that. So, this, all this paperwork is to address that one property. So, I recommend approving revised final resolution 2021-22.
Thank you, and that is the item we had in public carrying on earlier in the meeting. We have a motion for Mr. Wagner to approve, and a second for Mr. Fisher. Is there any comments or questions? Seeing none, please vote. My vote is aye. And that motion carries.
Thank you.
Item P, a request to approve Resolution Number 2021-22 for for three hundred and twenty thousand dollars and six, three hundred and twenty thousand six hundred and sixty-seven dollar state trust fund loan, presented by Ron Arman, Finance Director.
Thank you. As you know, during the budget process, we approve our overall borrowing, and then once we get our projects, we go through them with ailers and our bond council to separate them into kind of two buckets. The one, the larger items, that by statute, we can take formal bonds out for, that's the bigger street projects, you know, bricks and mortar type projects. So, that part of it's still in process, we'll sell those bonds May fifth. We've gone through the due diligence with our legal bond council, went through our Moody's rating call, so that part of it's still moving forward. So, this is the remainder of items that are, are a little shorter life, that we could either take formal notes are, which have a lot of issuance costs, or we can take a state trust fund loan, which is no issuance costs, kind of a nicer, easier process. And you can see from the term, we try to keep the term of these smaller, so when we're flattening out our debt, we just try to keep these, you know, to three, four, or five years, so they balance. And one change that I wanted to note on this, I found out today that the airport projects are not ready to go, so there's eighteen thousand dollars listed in the project list that we will not have to borrow for on the list. So, I called the Commissioner of Public Lands, and they said, that's pretty common, they said, go ahead, approve the resolution, and then you can just draw a lesser amount when you get there. So, even though the resolution is three twenty, six six seven, we'll actually draw and borrow eighteen thousand dollars, less than that, once we get the final paperwork. So, with that, take any questions or a motion to approve?
Do we have, the recommended action is to approve the resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-two, do we have a motion, Mr. Fire, and a second by Mr. Butke, are any comments or questions for Ron? Seeing none, please vote, and I'll vote aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number Q, a request to approve resolution number twenty twenty-one dash thirty-four, adopting the Wood County All Hazards Mitigation Plan, presented by Steve Varg, City Administrator, Steve.
Thank you. What you have before you tonight is a request for a resolution approval regarding the Wood County All Hazards Mitigation Plan. Just a little background, the city of Marshfield has long had an emergency management team that meets regularly, meet monthly, and we talk about issues in terms of, of the things we need to do locally, be prepared for, say, flooding, or tornadoes, or active shooter-type incidents, whatever it might be, and we even do drills, we're doing one next month, looking forward to that, the team in early May. But Wood County Emergency Management is active as well, and they're trying to get ahead of the curve and try to be able to prevent, mitigate, if you will, the kind of hazards that could come from natural disasters, and be able to prevent as much property damage and loss of life as possible. So, toward that effort, the city has participated in the development of the plan, and we have made some minor changes, it was brought to me, I shared it with our department heads, they flagged a few things, some of them housekeeping, some things that really weren't right in terms of representation of Marshfield, few things about projects we either done already or had to back up for some reason that were shown in their plan as being stormwater projects and those types of things. But ultimately, we find ourselves in agreement with that. This plan being adopted by the city is very important, because plan adoption by municipalities within Wood County is required as part of the grant funding that we might later be asking for, for mitigation projects, which we don't have anything on the horizon at the moment, but we may well be looking for grant dollars, try and do some work here in the city. So, I think it's important for us to be signed on to the Wood County plan. With all that in mind, I would recommend council approval of resolution twenty twenty-one dash thirty-four, adopting the Wood County All Hazards Mitigation Plan.
We have a motion from Mr. Fire, and a second from Mr. Varsho. Are there any comments or questions? Seeing none, please vote, I'll vote aye. And that motion carries. Item number R, request to approve resolution number twenty twenty-one dash thirty-three, support for a strong state and local partnership, shared revenue program, presented by Steve Varg, City Administrator, Steve.
Thank you, Council President, appreciate it. Well, the, one of the parts of our financing every year in terms of our budget is revenue we receive from the state, we get shared revenue, we get transportation aid, computer aid, other dollars that come to us that help supplement local property taxes and other things that we have in the budget mix. Unfortunately, shared revenue has been flat over the years, in the past twenty years, it's actually declined by ninety-four million dollars statewide, the amount of money in the pot. And not only is that a problem, but really, it's actually problematic that it doesn't increase to keep up with the rate of inflation, because we all know five million dollars today is not the same value as five million dollars next year. So, cities and villages are hurting as a result of this, and we're really pleading with the state through the legal Wisconsin municipalities to be more strongly supportive of keeping funding up and increasing funding, if you will, for shared revenue. That's a program that is really, again, it's so important to us, we get more than four million dollars in shared revenue, general shared revenue here at the city, and if you think of the size of our budget, you realize how significant that really is. I'd like to throw one more thing out as a result of some recent developments as well that's not actually in this motion, in this resolution, but the city also gets money to offset the loss we experienced in the franchise fees that we get from Charter Communications, that used to be a five percent franchise fee, and that the state came along and said, no, 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 and they've dropped it half a percent the first year, and one percent the second year, so we're down to four percent. But they pledged, as they often do, they pledged an offset to make sure that cities are made whole for that loss. The city of Marshfield has gotten roughly about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year in recent years in cable franchise fees, through the money remitted back to us through Charter, so now we've taken the half percent hit and the one percent hit, and so we're getting roughly fifty thousand of that two fifty now from the state, in what's called video service provider fee. But the state budget that's currently moving forward right now does not have that offset in it, and, you know, we're not sure if some of that's an oversight or if it's intentional, but there's an effort right now among various groups to try and get that reinstated into the budget that goes forward ultimately for the governor's signature. The loss of those monies is really, first of all, it's sort of a back off in the state's commitment, in my opinion, what they said when they told us that there would be an ongoing offset, but it's, it's dollars that we use for communications in our community and across the state of Wisconsin are used for valuable purposes. So, I guess, I'm looking for your approval of resolution twenty twenty-one dash thirty-three regarding shared revenue, but I also look for your blessing for me to send a letter, as I've been asked to today, to various state representatives, encouraging them to provide that offset fee for cities and villages for the loss of money from cable franchise fees.
Motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-one dash thirty-three, a motion by Mr. Butke, second by Mr. Wagner, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, please vote, vote yes. That, the motion carries. Item S, a request for funding five hundred dollars for training costs related to the Ethics Board, presented by Jen Rayqu, Human Resources Director, Jen.
Thank you. Recently, the Ethics Board membership had requested training for ethics in a municipal government setting. The city reached out to Dean Dietrich of Root or Ware for this training, the training is available for five hundred dollars and is tentatively scheduled for May fifth at five o'clock. The Ethics Board has also invited and encouraged council to attend this if they are interested. The reason why I'm bringing this before you tonight is that, instated in the ordinance number fourteen fifty-five that created the Ethics Board, all requests for funds for training need to be approved by this body. So, at this point, staff recommends council approve five hundred dollars to provide the ethics training to the board members as outlined.
Do we have a motion? Motion of Mr. Handler, second by Mr. Wagner, certain comments or questions? Seeing none, please vote, I'll vote yes. And that motion carries.
Thank you.
Item T, discuss lifting the mask man requirement for certain city buildings and facilities, presented by Steve Varg, City Administrator, Steve.
Thanks, Nick. Two weeks ago, I brought to your attention the fact that, you've already known it, is that the State Supreme Court struck down the governor's mask mandate back on March thirty-first, and again, that leaves all different entities, whether you be business, nonprofit, or in our case, a city government, to decide for itself what it wants to do with respect to that mandate. The, I did some survey, which I think I represented two weeks ago, I'll just briefly touch on it, I found out immediately that our budding neighbors, our immediate neighbors, that we oftentimes compare ourselves to, Wausau, Stevens Point, and Wisconsin Rapids, are continuing the mask requirement for their city buildings and facilities, in fact, they're not even entertaining, when I talked to them two weeks ago at least, any change to that, that's kind of, they kind of saw it as an indefinite continuance. However, I did go onto the city administrators' network, where my peers communicate back and forth and try to help each other with surveys and different types of responses on current issues, and I did find out that a number of them are looking at, at least worth the time again, looking at trying to set a date for lifting the mask expectation in their communities, for their city buildings and facilities, based upon some time after which the vaccine had been available to all, some date, once they believe that people would be able to get a vaccine by that time, if they wanted one, then they were going to remove it. I brought it to the council for a discussion, to see where you wanted to take it, at that time, I was asked to survey city employees, which I had not done, but I did so on April fifteenth, I sent out a survey, and I got overwhelmed with responses, I got tremendous number of responses from our employees in various divisions. And before I say this, I want to remind you that the library, the police and fire departments, and Marshfield Utilities are separate from this, they are governed by other bodies making determinations for them, the library board, the Fire and Police Commission, and the Utilities Commission decide when those types of requirements are put on and lifted. So, I'm not talking about those groups, but the rest of the city employees, broadly speaking, responded in great number to my request, and the overwhelming response was to end the mask expectation very soon, if not immediately. They felt similar to what I'm saying right here, that, actually, more so than what I'm saying right here, that really, the time to end it is now. I also got other responses from people who said that it ought to be lifted at some point in the future, again, when the, it appears that people have had an opportunity to get the vaccine, but the lion's share of people were in favor of ending it basically ASAP. So, taking another look at it myself, I appreciate the, appreciate the information I got from the, from the employees, I still do feel that we ought to be tying it to the opportunity that employees and our visitors, people who come to this building have had to get their vaccine shots. And if you remember, April fifth, the fifth was the day when it was made available to all, regardless of anything, as long as you're sixteen years of age or older. So, my recommendation to you tonight is twofold, first of all, to authorize the end of the mask requirement for city hall, effective with Monday, March, I'm sorry, March, Monday, May seventeenth, Monday, May seventeenth, the opening of business, which would be two weeks from Monday. Again, at that point, we will have had six weeks of time with the vaccine available to all, thereby giving you a chance to get the vaccine, and even have a two-week time period after, if you were serious about doing so, to protect yourself. I would also add that the input I got from, from the streets and the wastewater divisions was pretty much unanimous, and those were operations in which there are no, really little or no public coming to their doorsteps. You know, they may get a vendor, they may occasionally get a citizen, and they could put a mask on, but effectively, those are not places that get the public, and the employees there are completely supportive of eliminating that requirement. So, I would also ask you to consider having that requirement eliminated for them, effective immediately. And with that, I would take any questions.
That was, that was gonna be my first question, is there something that we can eliminate immediately, and maybe keep some until everybody has a chance? So, that's been answered.
Could I add one more thing, Nick? Sure, quickly, yeah, the library was also mentioned before, and, you know, when I talked to Jill at the library a couple of weeks ago, she was thinking they might wanna tie with the city as far as finding an end date to the mask expectation, but they did run that by the library board, and the library board is not interested in doing that at this time, because the patrons who come there are there for much longer periods of time, someone might be here for five minutes to pay a bill or whatever, but people who come to the library are often there for a couple of hours at a time, and therefore, providing more concerns, I guess, about transmission of the COVID-nineteen virus. So, at this point, they're not looking at making any modifications to their policy. Mr. Fisher?
Thank you, Council President. I have a few comments. One is, I appreciate the fact that you surveyed the staff, and it sounds like there was quite a few people who want the mask mandate to end, and I understand your explanation as to why it's not effective immediately, but I'd like to know, I mean, can you give me a rough percentage, when you say the vast majority of staff wanted it to end sooner than later, can you give me a rough ballpark?
Probably around ninety percent, it was, it was overwhelming.
And yet, we're still going to do May seventeenth.
Well, you know, again, I mean, I respect their comments, I respect the comment of Mr. Hiller earlier about this as well, I mean, I, the problem I have with it is we've come so far, we've been at this for a year, and the end is in sight, the tunnel, we can see the end, and I guess I'd like to get to the point where we cross the finish line well, which to me means giving everyone a chance, reasonable chance to secure the vaccine, and these are oftentimes two-part vaccines with three weeks in between, I think if we just go until the middle of May, we'll be able to tell people that we've done the best job we can reasonably protecting them, and yet, put an end to this requirement.
I may follow up, Council President, thank you. I'll support this, I mean, I, anyone who watched the last meeting or was here knows that I tried to make a motion to get rid of it effective immediately, and that died a very painful death, in my opinion. But I still hold to the belief that we should end it immediately, but I will support the May seventeenth date, but I do want to go on record just saying I'm disappointed, especially since there was such an overwhelming response from our staff, that we are not moving that date up sooner, and with that, I will make a motion, or it looks like there is a motion, so I will support it.
Mr. Butke, I'll go with him first.
Yeah, I, I don't like Steve the part where we're gonna have an earlier date for certain departments and a different date for the others, but I will, again, as Mr. Fisher, I'll, I'll go ahead and support this, but I just want staff or citizens to know that if they feel comfortable and wanna wear the mask, they certainly can.
Thank you, if I can respond to that, we certainly want employees and visitors to know that going forward, too. We certainly, you know, have no problem with people continuing to mask up, in fact, you know, we understand the benefit from that, even going beyond the date that this is lifted. I just want to say about streets and wastewater, if I can for a minute, part of the reason we want to keep the mandate on, I want to keep the expectation on through the middle of May, is not just for our employees, and I respect them, I respect their input greatly, but also for visitors who come to our building, who, you know, wanna be protected as well and feel comfortable when they're here or at one of our other facilities. So, the thing with streets and wastewater is, they don't have that kind of traffic. Everything I hear is that their people aren't walking down to wastewater in person for anything usually, it's pretty much their staff, so I feel a little bit more comfortable saying that, and again, they would be expected to have a mask handy, if in fact, somebody from the public came in, but that sounds pretty rare in both facilities.
Mr. Wolf.
Thank you. I just, I just wanted to mention that the court system is on a completely separate schedule from this, and I think any messaging that you give, it's important to make sure that that is clear to the public, because I'm sure that the, first of all, the Supreme Court has maintained a mandate for masks in all court settings and all court proceedings. I had a jury trial in Wood County last week, and they took it very seriously in terms of processing it that way, and I know the municipal court has, is gonna be following that ruling, so you need to be careful that all our messaging is clear, that that's a separate requirement in anyone coming into a court, when this spot, the same room is used as court, so anyone coming to court is likely gonna be still required to wear a mask.
We can sure through our communications department get publicity out about that, and then through signage on the day of court, make that abundantly clear as well, thanks.
Mr. Wagner.
Thank you, in case there's any doubt, I made a motion to accept Steve's recommendation.
Okay.
Okay. The, the reason I'm doing that is, I think the idea of giving people time to get the vaccine, and knowing that whatever protection the masks provide will not be available after that date, I want to encourage them to do that. I think, I think it's a wise decision, Steve, I think it's, it gives, it gives a way, it gives sort of a warning, a red flag, saying that the end's coming to this, and if you are worried about it, you better get, you better get vaccinated. So, I like that, and I'm gonna stand behind it, thank you.
Mr. Fisher, you have additional comment?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, I would just want to add two more things. One, you know, I keep hearing the term off and on the last few weeks, mask mandate, the city has never officially had a mask mandate, the state did, so I just want to make sure the public is aware of that. So I just want to make sure the public is aware of that. After the Supreme Court overruled the decision, it is now the choice of every individual whether or not they want to wear a mask or go to any public place or any building that requires mask wearing. So I want to make sure that's understood because I, I keep hearing that term and I think we're misusing it. Two, I believe that every person has individual rights and I believe that we need to be supporting people's right to choose. And I feel strongly that if someone wants to wear a mask, I will defend and fight for their right to wear a mask. And if someone doesn't want to wear a mask, I will fight and defend their right not to wear a mask. That's the beauty of our country, of our nation, how it was established, that we have rights, we have freedom, and as long as that is intact, I will continue to support people's rights.
Mr. Feyer. Yeah, I, I would like to go on record that our senior group at the community center, they have already stated that they want to have mask wearing because they play cards and they sit four to five feet apart. So they would like to continue until they tell me different. As a president, I'll just tell you that anybody that comes in to play cards or pool will wear a mask. That's what they want and that's what the committee did. So whatever they want, they should get so. If they change their mind, I'll just let you know.
Mr. Whitwell, you were up there. Okay, Ms. Spiros.
Thank you, Council President. I'm actually not going to support this because I think the mask mandate does need to end immediately. I'm wearing one today because I recently traveled. In fact, I was on a plane yesterday. So it, I, I took the responsibility upon myself to put my mask on today. And I think as adults, that everybody can make that same decision for themselves. I will say that my grandson attends second grade in Florida and they were allowed to go without their mask yesterday. Florida schools got rid of the mask mandate. And I spoke to him last night on the phone and the pure happiness and joy that he had as a seven-year-old boy. I mean, it was heartbreaking to me to even not realize how sad it made him to have that mask on for a year. He couldn't express that. He's seven, he couldn't really express that. But he certainly was happy and certainly excited last night and I'm, I'm just not going to support this because I think that these masks need to go away or people need to certainly be able to choose. We're, we're all adults here and, and I've had my vaccine for months and I've still continued to be mandated to wear my mask, you know, where I work and also here. And I, I just feel like this mask man, mandate should be gone starting today.
Mr. Whitwell.
I'm going to echo what Mrs. Spiro said. I voted the way I voted a couple of weeks ago because I was under the impression that the majority of the staff wished to continue. I very definitely not under that understanding now, so I guess I'm going to be voting against this as well because I believe that what we're doing is we're setting the working conditions for our staff. Our staff don't want it. I think that working conditions should be adjusted to make the most acceptable working conditions for our staff.
Mr. Wagner, would you restate your motion, please?
The motion was to accept Steve's recommendation for the mask, the city hall building mask mandate to expire on May 17th. Is that correct? Is that the date?
It is.
And the other ones on, immediately?
Excuse me?
And the others immediately?
He did recommend, that's his recommendation, which said that street department and sewage or water treatment could go immediately. Was there, was there another one, Steve?
No, just, just those two.
That's what, that was my impression also. Yes, sir.
Okay, second by Mr. Handler. Any further discussion? Please vote. I'll vote yes. Okay, it's a tied vote, so how's that calculated?
A tied, tied vote, a tied, tied. A tied vote means it fails.
Okay, that motion fails. Mr. Fisher?
Well, I'll try this. I will make a motion to get rid of the masks effective immediately in all city buildings.
Second by Mrs. Spiros. Reset the voting. Mr. Whitwell, you have a comment?
Yes, I do, I do want to comment that I think as was mentioned by Mr. Fisher, those that feel comfortable continuing to wear masks, I think that they should not be shamed. You know, if we have staff here that want to wear a mask at work, don't make them feel bad. If we have people who are coming in from the outside world and want to wear a mask, I think that that's perfectly acceptable. I do appreciate that we do have a protection barrier now on the counters if you're doing business so that there is that protection between people coming in from outside and in the staff that are working. But again, you know, I think it's something that if people are comfortable or more comfortable wearing a mask, then they should feel very comfortable and very free to do so.
Any further comments? The motion on the floor is to end the, lift the mask requirement immediately for all city buildings. I'll, please vote. I'll vote nay. That vote passes seven to three. Item U, discuss options on vacancy in the position of mayor, presented by Steve Barks, City Administrator.
Thank you. And before I comment, I want to thank, you know, all the employees that took time to fill out my survey. I really appreciate, I get some very thoughtful responses from people expressing, you know, their, their views on the matter. So anyway, thank you. We come back to the issue of the council, the vacancy of the mayor position, and I did talk about this two weeks ago, and the memo that you have in your packet is pretty close to the one that I put in the packet the two weeks prior. So I'll really be covering briefly the same options. There are three basic options that we, you know, presented then, which is one, special election, which is a city clerk mentioned at the last meeting. Takes probably, you know, two and a half months or so to make happen. So if you were to authorize a special election tonight, you'd be looking at sometime in July. You also run the, the possibility that there might be more than two candidates, in which case a primary would be, need to be held before the, the final election. So you might be extending that farther into the summer before you choose a mayor. The expected cost is somewhere in the neighborhood of $15,000 because we don't have another entity to share those costs with the way we might if they had other races going on at the same time. Next option, of course, is, is having the council solicit and take applications, resumes, letters from interested parties, and then actually have them come here to this very podium and make a pitch or maybe answer questions as to why they'd be good for the position of mayor, and then the council would make a determination as to who to appoint, if you will, for the balance of Bob McManus' term. The third option is to allow the council president position to continue to run the meetings as Nick is tonight, to sign official documents, ordinances, resolutions, agreements, those types of things, and probably not a whole lot more formally in terms of the baseline duties, although certainly the council president is encouraged to be more involved with staff and some other things that come up from time to time in the community. But just to go along for 12 more months and have the council president handle those baseline duties of the mayor opposition. Two weeks ago, I was asked to take a look at the council manager form of government. There are 10 cities and nine villages across Wisconsin that do have council manager forms. I'm familiar with a couple of those communities. What they do in some cases is have the council actually elect a mayor from among its own body to run the meetings and be that official head of the council, if you will, but the, the manager is the executive officer, the CEO per se of the organization. The manager has authorities that I don't have as city administrator. They can hire and fire department heads. I couldn't do that. I'd be before you bringing in an appointment recommendation to you for consideration for one of those jobs. They can also in many communities have a higher spending limit without council approval. They can, they can make some internal decisions that don't require council blessing, if you will. So there are some authorities, I put some of them in your agenda packet. If you are interested in that form of government, I would suggest that that's something that you ask be studied further for the future. It's not something I would suggest grabbing onto tonight. It's a process. It requires a charter ordinance be passed by the council. It gives the citizens an opportunity for a referendum and, you know, there are certainly citizens who may like or not like that form of government when they think about it. And there's a whole process that needs to be gone through under chapter 64 of Wisconsin statute. So I would suggest that if you're interested, let me know. We'll do some more research, we'll start digging into it, but I think for what you're facing right now, that's not the alternative that I would grab onto for the next 12 months because that's going to take some work to put into place if there's desire. So with that in mind, I take questions about any of those four options. Otherwise, I'll allow the council to deliberate. I will say one more thing, though. You know, we're at the point where we're a few, a few weeks out from when Mayor McManus was removed from the office. I do think now that we have Mr. Varshaw on as a new council member from District Four, it would behoove this body to make a decision tonight so that we have some direction going forward on what's, what's happening.
Thank you, Stephen. I was going to echo, echo that, that I would prefer that a decision of some sort is made this evening. Any comments, Mr. Buttke?
Yeah, I, I, Mr. Hiller, I don't, I don't think is totally all wrong on this, that if you want to get that mayor in there as soon as possible, but I don't think if we have a special election, and Steve, you mentioned it's still going to take time, especially if you get multiple candidates. I want, we, we've learned in the last election, there wasn't that many people out there voting. And I would like to, my idea would still be to have the council president run the meetings. I think Nick will do a good job and study all the alternatives there. I think we should look at that. Now's the time, now's the time to do that and, and go from there. But I want to have it in April. Hopefully we'll have other things on the ballot that are going to attract people to vote because the turnout was, was not real good. I mean, that's just normal, I guess, when you don't have much on there. And it gives candidates a, a opportunity to campaign and so on and so forth. So that would be my recommendation.
Mr. Whitwell?
Thank you. I, I just, I guess I had some questions on the costs, as was mentioned during the public comment period. We floated a price tag of 15,000. Is there a way that this can be done cheaper or are we really in our current day and age stuck with the $15,000 price tag?
Of course. Of course, it's going to depend upon if we have to have a primary and an election, but because this would be a special election, the city would have to bear all the cost of an election. Past elections, the county picks up part of the cost. So some of the costs that we'd be looking at is programming the ballots, postage for all the absentee ballots. We have to take care of all the publications that the county is to take care of, wages for all the poll workers and of course, election day supplies, and there's some other miscellaneous costs, so that all adds up.
So a lot of the expense is going to be, regardless of we're using some sort of county system, is still expensive, poll, poll workers, absentee ballots, all of the public, you said?
That is correct. The city of Marshall would bear all the cost.
Okay.
It's not shared.
And if we have more than two candidates, does that double the price tag?
Yes. Assuming that we would have a primary and an election, you're looking around $20,000 plus.
Here's your opportunity to discuss this matter. Mr. Fisher?
Thank you, Council President. You know, a few weeks ago, when we initially talked about this, I, I shared that, I think I was, I don't remember the exact words, but essentially leaning towards allowing the president to continue running the meetings for the foreseeable future. And the reason initially I said that is twofold. One, I wasn't too, I still not too excited about the price tag of a special election. But I also do not want to see us appoint anyone to fill the position. I do think it should be an election. So if my colleagues truly want a special election, I would go along with that because I do believe whoever the next mayor is, he or she should be elected. I'm going to say this, I'll be honest, the last few weeks I've been out in the public and hearing all sorts of interesting things about things people perceive that I have said or I think, and much of it's actually not true. So if I'm going to be damned for something, I'd rather be damned for what I actually said. So I'm going to go on the record and say this. I don't have the same appreciation for the position of a mayor. Personally, with our system of government, we have a weak mayor system. And I've said this before and I'll say it again. The way we operate, the position of the mayor is a figurehead, glorified figurehead. Now, there's obviously some authority, they can veto, they can, I'm trying to think, they can break a tie. But for the most part, our city is run by city administration and I think they're doing a good job. Now, Steve can testify to this, I don't always agree with him. I don't always agree with staff, but I do think staff is doing a very good job. And so I don't have honestly the same appreciation for the position, but if, if the public in the city truly wants to have an election and they want it now, I will support that. Thank you.
Mr. Wagner?
Thank you, Mr. President. The last time we spoke about this, I thought that what we should hold a special election as soon as possible and begin the healing. The truth of the matter is, I'm not sure that an election would bring any healing about. I think it might divide the city even more at this particular point in time. Adam just made a very interesting point about our weak mayor system and I was going to comment on that also. And I believe that we, we actually have a highly modified city manager system right now and that it's a city manager system in the sense that Steve is a CAO instead of the CEO. And basically the council, he reports directly to the council. He does serve at our pleasure, more or less, more, more than less, Steve, so don't worry. And the, and basically, the, the council president now can perform all the duties, including I think signing documents in behalf of the city that, that will keep us afloat. I'm suggesting that maybe we keep this going until April. Let's, let's see how it works. And maybe if, if we still, oh, and by the way, the idea of having some, some instruction on different forms of government, of governing such as a city manager. I happen to know a couple of city managers, you and I both know Mark over in Oshkosh very well and, and I understand what they do and how they do it and I admire them a great deal. I'd like us to get some, some more information on that and between now and April, make a decision. Oh, and by the way, there's another option there. It's, it's a strong mayor system and I don't think, from what I know about Marshfield, I don't think the citizens of Marshfield would like a strong mayor system whatsoever. So, but that's one of the options that they could also look at. Anyway, I, I hate to reverse myself on that, but from what I've seen, like Benjamin Franklin pouring tea in the saucer and saying, it's there to cool the passions, I think we need to do that. Thank you.
Ms. Spiros?
Thank you, Council President. I have a couple of clarification questions. So if we were to hold a special election, the soonest you said that could be done would be in July. One could assume there would probably be a primary. Deb, how quickly after the July? Deb, how quickly after the July election would you have, would you be able to have the general election for this, I guess?
So, looking at the statute, if we were to meet a primary, we could hold that on June 15th? I'm sorry. The primary would be held on June 15th. The election would be held on July 13th. If it's ordered for a special election, we would notice that right away. People would be able to start circulating. They would have until, I believe it would be like May 18th at 5 o'clock to get all their paperwork in. And then, of course, all the notices once again, and then we'd have the ballots ordered. But again, at June 15th to July 13th, that's a very quick turnaround. So we'd have to play with those dates a little bit, because you have to get the primaries certified and ballots printed. And state losses, you have to have ballots out at least three weeks before the next election, so.
Okay, so in follow-up, just a couple more clarifications. How many signatures does it take?
For citywide position, they need at least 200, 400 signatures.
Okay. And so presumably, we could have a new mayor, if we had a special election, we could have a new mayor in July, possibly, or August, you know. And then that person would then be required in December to turn around and gather those signatures again for the election the following year.
That is correct.
Okay. For that reason and that reason alone, I would not be in favor of a special election. I think that this position should be elected by the people. I think that Mr. Peschel will do a fine job in the meantime, and that we should just plan on voting on a new mayor next year. And I'll make a motion to that effect.
Do we have a motion and a second? Mr. Fisher, you have comments?
Thank you, Mr. President. I was actually going to make that motion, so she stole my thunder. I will, I agree, and I said this earlier, I believe if we're going to continue with the mayor, it should be done. The person should be elected by the people. And I think having the council president continue to run the meetings in the meantime is, I think, a wise thing to do. So I will support this motion. I do think we should, at the very least, have a presentation on the different forms. And I'm not saying even just specifically manager. I think the public and all of us need to be educated on the different systems. Because I mentioned earlier, a weak mayor system, there's also a strong mayor system, there's a management system. I think we should have an outside person, you know, maybe from the league, for example, come and give a detailed presentation on the different forms or different systems, so that in the future, we can make truly an educated decision on, do we want to continue? So, thank you.
Steve? Thank you, Nick. Just a comment I wanted to make on Adam's previous comment about the role of the mayor in a weak mayor system. It is largely informal. I mean, you know, the formal authority, running the meetings, breaking a tie, you can veto and force the council to override you with a two-thirds vote. I've seen that maybe a handful of times in my 10 years here. But the biggest, whenever, you know, whether we have an election in July or next April, the biggest, this will come out in what you're asking for in terms of a comparison of the various types, the biggest authority that a mayor has is informal. It's the role of pulling people together, trying to lead the body, get direction, work with council and staff together, far more that than the formal authority that you would see in the strong mayor system.
Any other comments? I'll just make a comment that I am not seeking a mayor's position, that's never been my goal. But I agree that we do need to elect a mayor rather than appoint a mayor. I accepted this position, and whether it's for three months or 12 months, I'll try to do my best. Ms. Spiros, would you restate your motion, please?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion that we postpone an election for the position of mayor until the spring, and that we continue operating with the council president, fulfilling the necessary duties of signing and whatever other issues come up.
And Mr. Rosen, you seconded that. Any further comments? Please vote. I'll vote yes. And that motion carries. Item B, a request to approve council president's appointments of citizens to committees, boards, and commissions, presented by me. Although I will comment that I did not select these people, that was the prior council president. So that's my caveat. We have a motion from Mr. Wagner to accept the appointments as presented. A second from Mr. Handler. Comments? Mr. Buttke?
I don't know if this is the time on this. And again, I don't want Mr. Hiller to get a big head here. But I think, were there, he talked about firing police commissioners, and I'm not, I'm not going who was, I'm not going against who necessarily was appointed. And I guess this would be for Mr. Whitwell, because as our president said, he blamed Mr. Whitwell for all this. But were there candidates, Mr. Whitwell, or people on the fire and police commission? I just feel in the future that we should always advertise, and so that people that were thinking about doing it, we would know about. And I understand the mayor does appoint it with our approval. But if you could answer that, Tom, please.
I received one letter of interest from Mr. Penker dated March 25th. He outlined his desire to serve if a position were to be open, and provided a list of qualifications, if you will, including prior service on a police and fire commission in Nielsville, extensive public safety background, local service on multiple committees and commissions within the city. He even identified that he has a police academy certificate from the Fox Valley Technical Institute. Knowing Mr. Penker from, not personally, but from his activities within the city, and his thoughtful approach to many, many things, whether it's communications, when we were involved in some changes there, or, you know, his approach he takes in the planning commission, he seemed like a logical choice. I actually thought he would fill in this position very nicely, even before I talked with him. I did talk to him on the phone, I called him for one reason and one reason only, and that was simply to find out if he had an interest in continuing working on the planning commission in conjunction with this position. And he said he would finish out his term on planning commission, he's got a one-year remaining on his term. So it seemed like a logical option. In terms of Mr. Meek, I sought him out. We had a resignation from the commission at one-year remaining portion of a term. I had heard from officers past and present that there was a desire to see somebody who had been an officer within the city to be on that commission. They would have some level of inside knowledge, or maybe some feedback in terms of how things should be run. And so, again, having worked with Mr. Meek, former Officer Meek, for many years as a police auxiliary member, I have a great deal of respect for that individual, and I sought him out, and he said he would be willing to serve in that role. So I thought that that would be good, especially as we're looking at some of the things coming up, including the hiring of a new chief. So those are the two people. I did receive after I had actually made these selections, if you will. I did receive an email, which I do know has been forwarded by that individual to everybody on the council, expressing interest by another individual. That kind of came in after these selections had been made, and after these people had been contacted. I did forward that on to Amy Krogman, so that whoever would be in the council president or mayor positions as the next position become available would have information on that individual. So that's where that sits.
Mr. Buttke?
Yeah, and like I said, Tom, I'm not criticizing, I will support your appointments. I just think in the future, you know, and it was a special circumstances here with the people resigning, but I think we owe it to the public to, in the future, when, and we have time to actually do it, for people to come forward if they're thinking about that. I don't want to, that's like what I do when we have multiple people that want to get on a board or something. I've been nominating them all for years, because they all deserve to be heard. And you didn't have that opportunity, Tom, and you did a good job. But I just think we should be able to advertise and get anybody that's got an inkling that they want to do that, that we can hear that.
And just to follow up on that, I did work pretty closely with Amy Krogman. We had 22 positions to fill in all of our commissions, committees, and boards. And so I did work quite closely with her. Again, I thanked her a week ago for her incredible work on this. She made a lot of phone calls. She threw positions that were open. In some instances, said, you know, what about this person, what about that person? She made some calls. So she did a lot of work to fill this out. But in those conversations that I had with her, she suggested, and I think that this would be a really good plan moving forward, maybe a couple times a year, having our communications department identify all of the opportunities. And I think I mentioned at the meeting last week, there's 80-plus total positions that we have in all these committees, boards, and commissions. Historic preservation, library board, just a whole plethora of different positions. And I think it would be good if our communications department got in front of this, a couple times a year, just put it out there that we've got positions for people to serve in these roles. Maybe start getting kind of a bench built, where we can have people on deck that we can call as these positions become available, whether it's somebody who resigns in the middle of a term, or whether it's the April appointments. Again, with the idea that there may not be a position right away, but we can always contact them, see if they're still interested when that time comes.
And I just want to go on record thanking you for what you did, not only with the appointments, but filling in as mayor during this time. So, thank you, Tom.
Mr. Barg?
Thank you. I'd just like to play off Tom's comments, and actually, Tom, Whitwell stole my thunder. We have talked about, historically, we haven't really been advertising for many vacancies during that time period when it's happening around April. But we do periodically, you know, try to seek who might be interested. And I've talked to Tom Loggs as well. We're going to try twice a year going forward to put out solicitations, maybe once later in the summer, and then once right after the first of the year. Try to get people who are interested in our various committees and commissions to send a resume, to send a letter of interest, so that we're prepared to make those appointments, not just in April, but sometimes when vacancies come up. They come up spur of the moment, when somebody moves, or when they decide their schedule no longer allows them to make the meetings, so that we can fill those vacancies. And we'll certainly do more than that if this body would like. But we'd like to have resumes and letters in the hopper prior to April if we can.
Mr. Rosen?
Thank you, Mr. President. Is there a reason or timetable that we have to fill this right now? Or could we delay this particular commission, the PFC, and do just what we're doing? We know the scrutiny that that commission is under currently. Could we delay it for even two weeks or a month? Or is there a timeframe that we have to fill that right now?
Currently, without filling these vacancies, you'd have three members. And three is a quorum. So three would be enough to have meetings at that commission. I don't know how long you'd want to wait, given the fact that front and center, the elephant in the room, is the search for a new police chief. So could you certainly? There's nothing barring you from delaying those appointments for any length of time. But that is an immediate need that I don't think we would want to have you putting it on the shelf real long.
Any further comments, Mr. Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two questions. One is for either Steve or the city attorney. Correct me if I'm wrong, it's my understanding that if we don't appoint the two new commissioners, now one has resigned, so that's a vacant position, but the person who has not resigned would still remain in office. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think by statute, tell someone else. I think by statute, until someone else is actually appointed and sworn in, then the remaining member, even though the term is up, remains basically in certain position that happened because they need somebody to be able to take action or whatever. So that would be the case here.
Okay. And then my second question is, and I guess this is to point in, because I don't know if I can ask the public, even though they made some comments, why would, why would we not vote? I mean, I kept waiting for the reason. I heard the idea, but what's the reasoning behind waiting?
No, and I honestly, I just wanted to hear if there was a reason, if we could leave it open. I completely forgot about what you had said. I love your point about the other member would still be on the commission. So I just wanted to hear if there was a reason, if we could table it or not.
Okay, I appreciate that. And the reason I'm asking that is, like I said, I don't know what the reason would be. So it's hard for me to make an educated decision to even consider not filling this when I don't understand what the benefit or the reason would be for doing it. So I'm going to vote to appoint all of these positions. Thank you.
Mr. Buttke?
Yeah, and on the record, I want to, like I said, I'm going to support this. I believe in what Tom did. I was just talking future, and that's the only thing I was really concerned with, that we put it out there, so people know that there's an opportunity, whether it's a committee, fire and police commission, what have you. That's all. And like I said, I'm going to support this. It makes sense.
Seeing no further discussion, I will just make a comment. I did receive some citizen input, mostly regarding the lack of female members on our boards. And I did count up, there are 29 females and 53 members among the people who are on the board. So I agree that we probably should become a little bit more diverse there, and probably racially diverse as well. But we need to have people volunteer to fill these positions. And I think that a better recruiting method needs to be developed. With that in mind, we also still have three vacancies technically, one on the Business Improvement District Board, and two for alternates to the Board of Review. So if you are interested in becoming involved in city government, please reach out to Mr. Barg or me, and we will try to get you penciled in somewhere. Any further comment? Seeing none, please vote, and I'll vote yes. That motion carries. Item W, City Attorney's Analysis of Complaints Against Two Fire and Police Commission Members, Presented by Mr. Wolfgram, City Attorney.
As you folks know, you did get the complaints that had been filed seeking removal. We've had some experience now with the process of removal under chapter 17 of the Wisconsin statutes. When this complaints, or when these complaints were received, they were forwarded to me by City Administrator Barg for my review. And when I even cursorily looked over them, I had identified that there was a deficiency in that under the statute, and that's, again, pursuant to chapter 17, and it's 1716, paragraph three. A complaint has to be verified, and even though this, these complaints that were filed contained multiple signatures, it wasn't verified. A verification is a formality, really. But what it is, is it's a sworn statement that swears by at least a responsible party. In this case, the statute requires it to be a citizen taxpayer, a resident taxpayer of the city, that the contents of the complaint are truthful and based on their knowledge. Verifications are used in certain types of cases that are sometimes filed in the court. For example, federal court requires verification for discrimination cases. There are certain types of other complaints that the city uses where verification is necessary. But it really comprises of a sworn statement that somebody is taking responsibility for the allegations contained in that complaint. So based on the fact that this didn't contain the verification, really, the body doesn't have the authority to remove. really, the body doesn't have the authority to remove any of the members that are complained about. It's just simply the formality necessary by statute wasn't complied with to be able to take any action. The complaint's really only asking for removal so that a lack of that formality doesn't allow you to proceed. I will note that on the very day that the complaints were received, I did reach out to at least a representative of the complainants, indicating that I had observed that that was a deficiency. At that time, Councilmember Whittsoe was council president. He authorized me to share with them the concern and give them the option to remedy that defect. And as of today, my understanding is that that hadn't been done. I'm not going to speculate on why, but it is something that I think prohibits you folks at this point from, you know, taking action on those complaints.
Mr. Wolfgram, what, if anything, could those complainants do to remedy that?
Yeah, I mean, so I want to be very, very clear that, you know, and again, this looks like I dated it on April 5, and just basically said you need to get that verification. And I specifically indicated, as an example, we had just gone through the process with the removal of the mayor. So that complaint that was filed contained the verification. So it's simply, you know, having that, you know, it's basically a sworn statement attached that says that the contents of the complaint are something that somebody's swearing to and taking responsibility, that they had reviewed the content and are supporting it.
Mr. Wagner.
Thank you, Mr. President. Seeing as we just appointed two new members to the Fire and Police Commission, and one of the reasons that we had two was that one of the gentlemen who was named in a complaint had very graciously decided it was best for the city if he did not apply again, which renders at least one of the complaints moot. So I don't see, I don't know if, even if there was a verification, at this point, I think it would be a moot point on at least one of them. I don't, if, may I ask, Mr. City Attorney, have you given the people who submitted it enough opportunity to cure the deficiencies?
Again, you know, the complaints came in on April 5, as I recall, and I wrote that evening out, you know, to one of the representatives, the ones that personally came and delivered them to Mr. Barg. Following that, I had been asked by them to have a telephone conference, and I had made some time available. They then chose not to do that at that point in time. I had a brief conference with those same members, and just indicating, hey, you understand what I was talking about. And so, given that there hasn't been a change to it at this point, I don't know if you want to say it was at enough time. I think that's up to you folks. But I don't think, and in fact, in terms of you folks being worried about what do you do? Again, I don't think you need to take any action. My view is that you can't, you know, you guys have been through this already. So you know what the next step would be, would be that you would undergo the process of scheduling up a hearing and moving forward with removal. You cannot do that, given the status of this at this point. Now, someone could, you know, move forward, somebody could either refile complaints, somebody could provide the verification and sort of backdate the complaints that you currently have. But as far as what you do right here, right now, I don't think there's anything that you can do. And I'm not saying that you couldn't, you know, make some kind of comment on it or whatever, but that's, in terms of removal and what's being asked for in these complaints, you have no authority to do it because the statutory requirement for you to be able to move forward or take any action on these complaints is not complied with, and it's essentially jurisdictional. You can't do anything like that. Remember that part of this, and again, we've just been through this, and it was a very, very trying thing for the city, the city staff, and this council, I know that. And you know what this would mean if you move forward. So you need to be prepared to do that. But part of that process, as you learned, is the fact that the person who is accused about in a document like this has a due process right. And if you go off the bat, the first thing you do is not follow the statute by moving forward on something, I'm telling you that this, you know, that's just not legally appropriate. It's against my recommendation, that's for sure.
Mr. Henler.
Thank you, Mr. Counsel President. You know, as was mentioned, you know, these procedures are very difficult for the council and the staff and legal representation. I think we've been through this for quite some time, and I think it's time to move forward and do something positive, is what we would ask to do on this council, is to govern and help the city staff do its thing. And it cannot do this without having to support this council to act positively. And I think what has happened is, from my standpoint, is it's been very decisive, and people have gotten, gotten a bad name through this whole thing. And I think we should move on as quickly as possible. And if it would be appropriate, I would like to make a motion to that effect, that we dismiss this if we can, and move on to do the business we're supposed to be doing.
I see everybody looking at me now. And, you know, I was trying to deal with Mr. Wagner to make sure that he wasn't going to do what you just did. So there isn't, again, I think you can dismiss it because of the fact that it lacks the requirement. I mean, I think you can take that action. I don't think that it is necessary for you to do that. I think you're not able to take action on it. When you, you know, this is sort of like, we've talked about this a number of times in the past, it's taking a negative motion. But, you know, so can you do it? I think the complaints are filed, you lack the jurisdiction to take action on it. So if you wanted to say at this point that you're going to dismiss them, I think you can, I think you can do that. But I question, why do it if you're in the current situation where you don't have the authority to take that action? I suppose that the one thing about it is, it's dispositive of this at this point in time. But you're not really authorized to take action on it. So, and it does lack the authority. I do agree that, in theory, you could make a motion to dismiss these complaints, and that would allow the other parties to go ahead and file something new if it's going to contain the correct formality. So I leave that up to the council's discretion. I'm not going to tell you it's legally inappropriate. That's, I wouldn't go that far.
If I may, if I may follow up, I would like closure to this in some way, that this council body says, let's move on. The, you know, it's unsubstantiated at this point because of legal act. But I would just like to get rid of it. Because every month, they think of this thing. And I don't like things hanging over my head. That's why I like to get rid of it.
Mr. Henler, could you just register that on your motion on your computer, on your phone?
What would you like me to do, Mr. President?
Just make the motion on your phone.
My thing is dead.
Okay, we've got it, we've got it here. I would need a second, if anyone wants to second. Second by Ms. Spiros. Comment by Ms. Spiros.
Thank you, Council President. A couple of things. I tend to agree with Mr. Henler's sentiment on, you know, there's a lot of negativity surrounding that, and that weighs very heavy in this chamber. But I don't think that statutorily, we can act on it. Like you said, it's not a valid complaint anyway. Secondly, I don't want it hanging out there because it no longer involves one of the members. One of the members in that complaint listed is not even, it will never be valid. It will never be a valid complaint because he's no longer a member of the Fire and Police Commission. For that reason, I don't want it hanging out there for the same reasons that Mr. Henler has mentioned, along with the fact that it wouldn't ever become valid anyway. There's just some, you know, I just think that it needs to, we need to start with something more positive, and it needs to just, we need to handle it.
Any further discussion? I would just comment that I agree that I don't like the negative motion, that we're voting not to do something. And I think that we should just let it die a natural death, if that's what it's going to do without the proper verification. And I'll be voting no. Seeing any further, oh, Mr. Fire.
I'm going to be voting no also, because I honestly believe what I know about this community. Just because you want this to go away, it's not going to go away. You have to solve it when, I think if you ignore it, it might have a better chance of not going away than if you vote this vote, if you do this motion, it's not going to go away. And I'm going to vote no. I voted no on the original, I'm voting.
Mr. Rosenich.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll vote no as well. I think if we just dismiss it, it's telling the citizens that we don't really care what they think and what they want to say. It's their opinion, it's their complaint. It seems to me they probably could amend it, they could get it verified if they want to go down to the one member. I'll be voting no.
Any other comments, Mrs. Spiros?
You know, Quentin, that certainly is your opinion, you're entitled to it, but you do not speak for every member on this committee. It has nothing to do with the fact that I don't respect their opinions or their concerns. It's a legal thing. It's just going to sit out there forever. Otherwise, if we don't do something with it, it's just going to sit there. And it can't even ever come and be, you can't ever verify this complaint now because one of the members listed is no longer on the commission. Mike, you may be right. I mean, that certainly could be true, but I don't, I don't want the members who, or the members of this community who filed the complaint, it is not because I don't care, or because I don't believe you, or because I do believe. I mean, I don't know if I believe you, don't believe you. I haven't seen any evidence that's never been presented to us at this point. But it isn't for a lack of concern on what your opinions are, what your thoughts are, what your concerns are. That is not it at all. And I just wanted to go on the record and state that that is not the reason for wanting to get rid of it. The reason is to move on positively. This community is hurting. We are broken. And we need something positive. We need to have, you know, we have other things that are still weighing and hanging out. There are lots of things still weighing and hanging out there, actually. And at some point, we need to be able to press ahead. They certainly, like you said, Mike, earlier, if they still have the same concerns, they're able to file a new complaint and amend that and make it so that it's appropriate for our current situation. But I don't want the 101, I think, members that signed this, or 105, whatever it was, to think that this is representing, just poo-pooing your concerns away, because that is not the case at all.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Fisher.
Thank you, Mr. President. I respectfully disagree. I'm going to vote no on this motion. I agree with the comment that this is not about not believing certain people, not believing their concerns, not taking the complaint seriously. Totally agree with that. But two things. One, our city attorney just told us that the complaint was not statutorily correct. So I think just not taking any action, in my opinion, would have been the best thing. I have said this before, and I will say this again, when you get to a certain level of conflict on either side, I don't care which side of the conflict you're on, eventually you stop thinking rationally, you stop thinking logically, and you start thinking emotionally. And when you put a line in the sand and say, I'm right, you're wrong, whatever we do, even though the intention might be positive, and I believe the intention is, I believe people want to make this motion and pass it with the best intentions in mind, but people are not going to receive that as a positive thing. They're going to look at that and go, it's a slap in the face. So I, from where I'm sitting at this point, I'm voting no more based on a technicality than anything else. I just don't see why we need to actually vote not to hear the complaint. The complaint isn't valid. We move on. One member isn't, well, one past member is not even on the commission now. If they want to bring another complaint, as I stated earlier, it's still a free country, in my opinion, so they can do that. And we deal with it at that time. Thank you.
Mr. Whittsoe.
Thank you. I guess I have some questions for the attorney. This council votes no to not dismiss this. What happens then?
Well, nothing would be taking place at that point unless you made some other motion. My concern with that is just this, that you, you obviously, sorry about that, you obviously don't have the jurisdiction to take any particular action on it. Dismissing the complaint is making a different statement, I think. And again, that certainly could be your prerogative. There is the concern, and I acknowledge the issue that's raised by Mr. Henler and Ms. Spiros, and that is that it appears then that this is hanging out there. One option for the council to take would be to bring a motion to simply take no action. You're taking affirmative action to say, we're going to take no action on these complaints because we lack the jurisdiction to do that. It's different than dismissing the complaints. Maybe that's semantics, but it does at least let the public know, we can't take action on this. Unfortunately, maybe I didn't do it artfully tonight, but my plan was to tell you what my legal opinion was, and that was going to be the announcement to the public, that we can't really take action on this. I don't want the body to be sitting here feeling like, you know, they're being expected for the public to do something. Really, my opinion is, you can't. So that would be the other option. If you voted no, you could affirmatively then take a vote on somebody's motion. This would have to be a motion, but that we take no action on these complaints, given the fact that we don't have the authority to do so. And that's different than outright dismissing. There is a little bit of a difference there. Jurisdiction, in part, is an element to being able to take any action in the first place, and I think that's missing here as things stand. Otherwise, if you do nothing, and you don't, you know, take any action, I think it just, it does sit there in the sense that you, it's a complaint that the citizens brought. They asked for removal, you can't do that. So you take no action on it, but it isn't outright, you know, saying that it was wrong or whatever. And I don't think anyone is expecting here, or was even intending in any way, to talk about the merits of the complaint. I mean, frankly, that's not appropriate anyway. It would require, in fact, it would be inappropriate, as you know, as we went through the mayor's hearing and some of the other matters the city's dealt with in the last year. I've often cautioned, we don't want to be making comments either publicly or discussing matters that may be something that ultimately the body would have to hear as a decider of fact, and that's literally what we're talking about here. If the complaints were ever brought forward, essentially, this body is then sitting as a judicial body that would be deciding the merits of this complaint. So we don't want to, we don't want to be put in that position. But to sum it up, your option, if you took no action, it just would sit there as a complaint that was filed. It's informative. There's an argument that it's informative. It brought forth citizens' complaints. It brought forth citizens' concerns, and you're aware of it. And it became clear, based on our discussion here tonight and the record of this meeting, that you were not able to take any action or act on the request that was made to you.
Thank you.
Mr. Buttke, you have a motion to amend the motion?
Yeah, actually, I need to explain. If I were
If I were to be voting on the original motion, I would have had to vote no for the reasons. Every once in a while, I do listen to Mr. Wolfgram, but I would make an amendment to the motion to, what was your wording, half-please?
So if you're talking about doing something different than dismissal, that you would make a motion that the body take no action in regard to the...
Because of...
In regard to the complaints, because it lacks the authority to do so. That would be...
That's exactly what I said.
Okay, we have a motion to amend the motion, that's on the floor, with a second. Did you have further discussion, Mr. Buckey? Or anybody else have discussion on the amendment to the motion? So the motion, to amend the motion is to take no action, and we'll be voting on that first. So please vote on whether to take no action or not.
Hold it now, I'm not sure that we announced that properly. So that, so as I understand the motion, the motion is to amend the original motion to state that the body will be taking no action on the complaints because it lacks the authority to do so. Deb's give me a thumbs up, she's the one that keeps track of these, so, okay.
Okay. Thank you. Between the two of you, you'll keep me in line here. Please vote on that, and I will vote no. So the vote is seven to three in favor of that motion. Now we have to vote on the motion, which will be to take no action on the complaint filed. I'll have, I'll have Deb repay it.
Okay. So we're going back to the main motion now that it's been amended. So the amended motion then would be to have this body take no action in regards to the complaint filed against the two Fire and Police Commission members due to lack of authority to do so.
And I don't see any further comment on that, so please vote, I will vote no. Mr. Handler, your vote?
No.
Mr. Hunter, no. That vote, motion carries seven to three. I think we're done with that. Item X, adjourned to closed session under Wisconsin statutes, Chapter 19.65, parent one, parent G, conferring with the legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning a strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation, which is, or is likely to become involved, specifically litigation involving personal property tax claim. Do you have to do that?
Goodbye.
Deb, do you have to do a roll call vote on that? Okay, please vote on going into a closed session. Motion is by Mr. Byce, second by Mr. Whitso. Now vote yes.
Mike, can you vote?
We need some votes.
Marshall? Whitso?
I voted against.
Oh, I'm sorry, Rosenditch? Wagner?
Mr. Fisher?
He's the pastor. I voted yes.
Mr. Handler?
And Mr. Handler?
Okay.
We are in closed session.
Action on matters discussed in closed session and we're looking for a motion to approve a settlement with the Marshville Clinic Incorporated with revised language approved by the city attorney. One make motion by Mr. Butke, second by Ms. Spiros. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Go vote yes. And that's Gary. Any items for future agendas? Mr. Fisher.
I said this earlier, but I'd like to have an item maybe early in the summer where just suggestion, the leak comes in a mix of presentation, but I would like that formally requested.
Anything else? I take that's a motion, Mr. Rosendich to adjourn. And second by Mr. Barsho. All in favor, aye. Oh, we got a vote.
Yeah, I'll take those back from you guys.
Everybody vote. And...
By the way, with this lock at least you're leaving earlier than you are.
Okay, we're adjourned.